We get started. Amit, how's it going there?
Yeah, good morning, John. So yeah, going good. So I smell ping me one problem regarding activity feed. So he said the parameter activity feed was giving problem. So it smell I check it now within that parameter, I was not getting the problem. But like if I pass like uh uh I see Jerry message that Jerry had fixed for hours, right Jerry?
Yeah, I I fixed some of it, but it looks like there was another uh section I was giving an error. It was late for me.
I'm good. Yeah, I'm going to that part. So yeah, so when I uh say more uh fetch more record, so I found it. Uh two inside the post, two part was coming uh creating the problem. Inside post two. Uh so I fit that one. I created a pull request also Jerry, you can take a look.
Okay, let me see. I see, okay.
So.
Oh, cool. Copilot is. Copilot is adding AI comments to the pull request. Interesting.
Yeah, I request to copilot also.
Uh.
That's right. So when I create a pull request, I have added copilot also as a review.
Nice. Let me look at this real quick. Hmm. Okay.
And apart from this, uh John, I also start looking this uh Vivo Android phone. Yes, an issue. I order a Vivo phone, so like I I need to debug using that phone. So yeah, so tomorrow I will debug that one.
Sorry, I was typing something out. You're gonna debug what?
Like Vivo and Oppo phone, uh we are not this notification problem.
Yeah.
So we need to paste using like the what Jerry suggested, passing and thread channel ID and then something. So I tried to find the phone today and I'm not able to find. So tomorrow I will have phone, that phone.
Okay, um we have to paste what? You said paste a cha- channel ID or something?
Android channel ID.
Okay, and is this for diagnosis?
Yeah, it's in a code if you're asking for it on it.
No, 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 like I'm not asking for the code like like yesterday you said stigma, we will remove the channel ID and test the notification.
Hmm.
That part I was seeing that.
If if we remove the channel ID, you're hoping that solves the problem or would?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yes, so what chat just suggested, if you will, I will remove the channel ID. It's so that there is some channel ID which is not recognizing due to their OS. Uh they have some OS, uh different OS like OS uh sixteen or something OS they are like there. I will tell you which OS. I will tell you one minute.
Okay.
Which OS it is. Uh what was the problem? In session one, give me one minute.
Hmm.
Okay. Color OS. It is called color OS, opt and mute, uh misconfigure, non default channels.
Hmm, that's and that would cause the chat notifications not to deliver?
Yes, yeah, my, yes, this is suspect thing. Yeah, I need to check.
Could it also cause? The entire um subscription to be unsubscribed? Is that possible too? Like after enough uh messages are not delivered, do does is the, does the phone or the carrier unsubscribe at a certain point?
Yes, it is just watch activity saying it's can be. So why it works now, like if there is so bad, miss muted chat channel color OS. Falling back to default channel. Let's not notification if we got a client update.
Okay, that which could even make the system messages unsubscribed, right?
Yes, that might be the thing I'm saying in suspected way, not confirm it suddenly.
Right, right, yeah. I wanna, yeah, cuz I'm trying to figure out in this one case, did she? Delete the app or did she just get unsubscribed, you know, by the phone, by the carrier? Um.
Well, I see she hasn't even opened the app since the sixteenth, so.
Yeah, and I well, and also she isn't getting any notifications either since the sixteen.
Yeah, I'm surprised you just would. Out of curiosity, as active as as you said she was. Yeah.
Right, but like there's no trigger. There's no like.
There's no trigger.
Yeah, she if for as far as she's concerned, the app is like out of sight, out of mind. There's nothing, there's nothing going on there. You know, but had she been seeing all the messages going back and forth in the chat she's in, curiosity probably. Bring her back in, you know, um which I don't wanna get to the bottom of. I think I wanna send her a SMS and just find out. Um.
How are you gonna SMS if she's in India?
I don't know. I'm not.
Again, I can send this.
What's that?
I can call you. Even I call her also, like if you will tell me, I can call her also.
That'd be great. Yeah, let's let's start with the SMS. Um introduce yourself as an engineer on the circles team and where you're doing debugging of notifications. Um and ask her if she still has the app installed.
Okay, but like I think it's two, uh it's now ten PM here, so I am sees a girl, so I don't.
Yeah, you should, yeah, do it in the morning. Um yeah, normal. Um, do you need the phone number? I have it.
Yes, yes, bring me that phone number.
Okay, I got it. Um, okay, so yeah, let's start with that and then. Um, what about other phones and other carriers in India? I don't wanna just do it for the Oppo, Oppo phone, like uh what other, what other ones do we need to look at?
Uh so India like mostly like people are using Samsung iPhone, then after Chan this Chinese phone or four Vivo. And then after one more Chinese phone, they're OnePlus.
Okay, should should we then maybe look at all of their OS, their operating systems, just to make sure we're not only fixing it on one of them?
OnePlus also has different operating system. It is kind of Android, but it's not Android. Okay, it's like kind of Android.
I think, I think you can get a OnePlus phone here in the States, John. I think it's just some Chinese phones we can't order.
Interesting, okay. Um, so yeah, whichever ones are used over there though, Amit, I wanna make sure we're addressing notifications on all of them.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Okay, cool. Um, yeah, did you have anything else to update?
No, Jerry just approved my pull request. So it smell is there now. It smell, can you please test? It smell is there? Yeah, please do.
Yeah, I'll. That's the right answer. So crashing.
Uh wait, it's reply, uh it's not. Yep, let me check it's uh. Uh, sorry, what did I start? Not let me check it.
Amit, do you have um access to Sentry session replay?
Yes, I have.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna send you a link to it. It's got the phone number and and session replays for this user.
Okay.
Just to give you a little more context around it. Um. Okay, do we have any more updates?
Nothing.
Okay, okay, I just sent you a link to. Let me know if the if the phone number shows up for you. If not, I can just type it out. It's not letting me copy a copy of the link.
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, give me one minute. I smell you can test it.
Okay. Okay, so, um. Yeah, I guess I was gonna ask a question, but I'll save it. So Jerry, let's get your update.
Yep, so. Let's see. I am working on a query for Wells to populate the wheel. So there's gonna be certain uh a query that he's gonna request that's gonna populate if the wheel has like category selectable, so it's like.
Yeah. Um. Are you talking about if it has?
Like if there's, yeah, content.
I wanted to. That's, I don't wanna go that way yet. Um, it's a nice to have, but it's not, it's not thought out all the way and um. There are plenty, sorry, we talked about this the other day. I've said pause on that. Yeah. I don't remember if Wells re- rekindled it, but um let's pause on it. We have way bigger fish to fry. Hmm. Um.
Yeah, that one. Good.
Yeah, the most important. Tasks coming up for this project are going to be. Um, just polishing and refining everything we have. So like everything we did yesterday, I think, and we spent a couple hours.
Danny, yeah, Danny just got me uh those this morning, those users.
Okay, which ones?
The users that for the notifications.
Oh, yeah, right, good.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so notifications, uh contact imports. Hmm, notifications in general, they really, Tori is very active in the app and um. She's been, she's been telling me we have to trim notifications. She said, and I said, okay, give me some examples of them, so I know where to focus and she's, cuz she, you know, but then, of course, it's a balance because a new user. May get almost no notifications and look and we can see what happens like this girl in India, for example, she's not getting any. Then we also are losing out. So too many is a loot, we lose, too few, we lose. So we need this Goldilocks, just the right temperature and um that will come from. Deep diving into data and behavior and some trial and error. Yeah, it's not gonna be like there's just no. Quick fix to any of this, but it's an example of one of many things along the lines of just all that, making sure our contact imports, our friend connects. Um, uh even just like the hints that that pop up, the welcome messages in chats. You know, we did the one for Garibaldi's chat, for instance, we should have one in every chat, like all of those things are top, top, top priority. Over the next couple of weeks, over really anything else, as as we finish up the React Native upgrade and the music player and stuff like that, as that gets finished. I want everything focused in on the current app and getting the best possible experience for our users, otherwise. We're gonna scale. In a very bumpy way and um so yeah, so let's make sure we're all on the same page. You know, we don't need any kind of features, just um really getting our arms around what we have.
Okay, so let me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, okay, so Danny has a user for me. I wanted to also add is as far as both notifications go in groups. Uh I wanted to remind you about how notifications work in our big curated groups. That they, once the group hits uh two hundred members, which is almost all of our public groups. Any new users that join, they'll only receive notifications from friends by default.
Okay, we have that set up already.
Yeah, I'm just letting you know that people that are joining these groups are not gonna be getting notifications from everybody by default.
Right. Is that why? Well, wait a minute then.
No, not for this user. That that's not what happened for this user.
Okay.
Yeah, we already tested that, but that is also why a lot less notifications are going out.
Yeah, okay, so and yeah, this comes down to logic where we have to say a new user should get this many. But no more than this many. You know, putting some guardrails on it.
Hmm.
Um, we'll just have to work together on it and look at the, yeah, with the, with the data, we'll we'll get it right. It'll we'll tweak it. And that the same will go for like some of the location pings and different things like that. I wanna focus on all that stuff and get the most out of. All these, they're very really powerful tools we have if we use them right, but they're also, when used improperly, gonna. And definitely send people to the exits. We don't want that.
Hmm.
Um, so yeah, let's, let's um. If if any, in the meantime, if anything, if I'm. On other stuff. Just you having uh a collection of. That meaningful data in a way that's easy to access where like, in other words, if you start getting your arms around it. And when we do dive in, where you can quickly access it and present it will be helpful. So that, so that way we can make quick, informed decisions on it. So just keep in mind, that's that's where I wanna be focusing on is logic. Lot, a lot of logic around all this stuff, around the notifications. And around um flows for um for users. What they see, when they see it and.
Hmm.
A lot of his notifications really could, I mean, that could be the location stuff. Um, anything with chats. And um other stuff, so. Let's get that organized and um what else are you gonna be working on this week?
Uh, there was just a bug fix from Todd on the admin portal. He just uh reported that one of the pages on the admin portal wasn't paginating. And but yeah, I was really hoping to get on top of those notifications today.
Uh, in what, in what way?
Like what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna run some test notifications and these are the users that Danny is saying are not receiving these notifications.
Yeah.
Um, and he said that they should still be active users. Yeah, this is an active user here.
Hmm.
Um, let's see. Yeah, like this user just got their, their streak uh notification. Uh but I'll see why this user isn't receiving chat notifications, for example.
Okay, so, um, yeah, no, I would like, I'd really like you to stay focused on.
Yeah, um, you can go on with the other updates and we could circle back. I can uh, I'm gonna try a couple tests and see where where we get.
Sure, okay, sounds good. I'll come back. Um. Let's see. Uh, it's mail, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, um, so yesterday I. Did a lot of improvements all around, um got a bunch of little tasks knocked out. Um, so let's start with the the profile we were talking about yesterday. Um, so a quick kind of demonstration. Okay, so hmm. You would see that over here we have um, this is how the app is currently is. So when you load in, you see the little avatar and then this pops in. And then you see the buttons, then you see these. Um, I want you to pay attention to this activity. When you, when you go from here to here, see it starts here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good place, yeah. So um now after the changes, um so here's what's gonna happen. Um. Once we go in, you're first gonna notice that this is gonna be gray and it's gonna smooth in. Um.
Oh, you seen more time?
Yeah.
I wasn't looking at the right area. Oh, yeah, uh much better.
Yeah, and then I added placeholders for these. Okay, let's if we look again.
Nice. That's so much sharper. Good job.
Yeah, and then for these, um if you notice, there was, these used to also go down, so I added placeholder for the text, so that it doesn't jump, so let's go again.
Excellent. Oh, that's great. That's really.
Then finally, if you pay attention to this activity right here, you go in. It didn't even budge.
Hmm, yeah.
Jumping.
That's great. Um, okay, so then that's target user profile. What about on your own profile?
Yeah, so yeah, it's kind of. Was the app.
But that's really good. You're really good at this um styling stuff. Well done.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and then here, when we go, same thing. Well, I guess after with the placeholders, it's one.
Yeah.
But but this was, if you can see, it did the same thing basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I just have to remove the. The placeholders for the buttons, cuz you don't have those on my own profile.
Hmm.
Uh, maybe add one here also.
Yeah, I was thinking that. Um.
Yeah.
Okay, I think.
Share my profile. But yeah, that's that's the last tweak I need to get in.
Okay, perfect. That share button, by the way, um we originally had it on target user profiles. Um.
Oh, it's it shouldn't be there anymore.
No, I know. If we did put it there, cuz um. I feel, I I feel like it could use a little revamp. If you go to another profile. Hmm. Cuz like we kinda have it in the three dots, but forgot it's there and then. Um. I'm thinking we maybe do bring it back here. It's the functionality of it is pretty. It's already there, right? Like if we did wanna bring that button back here. To be able to share user profile from here.
Um, yeah, it could. Um, let me see.
Hit that one? Yeah, it'd basically be that, right?
Yeah, but this, yeah, this this currently shares it within the app. This is a little different than what you think.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay, let me think about it a little bit.
Yeah.
But um, but yeah, I know that looks good. Um.
Um, and I think I see a. Yes, I need to fix this. Showing the wrong avatar.
Oh, never noticed that. Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll kinda take a note of that. Um.
Yeah, okay. And then that reminds me, there was a different weird thing that Todd experienced yesterday, the before yesterday. Um, after you're done taking a note, I got a question about that.
Yeah, um. That's it.
Okay, so um. And I I experienced it too. I had, I still had that text. Uh in an input field from a prior message I had sent.
Yeah, I added. One more reference that I guess needed to be cleared, so hopefully that fixes it. We'll test it out now. This is part of, it's gonna be part of the next build that's gonna come out.
Um, now what about Todd's situation? Well, he shared a profile and it ended up being completely the wrong profile.
Um.
See that?
Yeah, it's an into that, yeah.
Okay, take a look at that next.
Yeah, that's someone thought he shared uh, let me see, I think he, do you send me it or yeah, I think he sent me it, right?
I did, I sent you a screen record.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that one I wanted to see if it was backend or not, because it was showing the wrong card.
Yeah, actually, I was sharing a user profile and it shared a business.
Yeah, I showed a business which, and then he's talks it after you left and came back, it's still, it's right now, it's still doing that, right?
Correct.
So that's why I'm saying maybe Jerry or Amit, it could be backend. Uh, but maybe also the mutation was off, cuz I tried sharing a profile and it showed it is fine.
It does, like probably, I I would say ninety nine point nine per- percent of the time that I've been sharing things like that is the first time I've ever run into it.
Yeah. So.
I don't know, I share it with Jerry and Amit or?
I think it's worth considering, cuz if it was a cache problem or something like that, it.
Right.
It would clear it when you close the app, but since it's consistent, tells me maybe uh backend also, maybe it's worth looking at. So basically Jerry or Amit, he shared a. Hmm. Well, this is, okay, so I see that you're showing a P- Pizzeria on that squ- long screening recording you sho- you sent me.
That was um.
I think that was something else.
That's the one. It actually shows, it even though it shows, okay, so I didn't, I wasn't recording when it happened, obviously, so.
Hmm.
Um, what I was left with was this Roma Pizzeria shared.
Yeah, after you hit send.
Correct.
Yeah, you selected, he selected a person's profile to share. And all that worked as you would expect until you had send.
Correct.
Then what sent was some, like it's almost like it mixed up the profile IDs or?
Well, here's the weird thing, here's the weird thing. Here, let me, let me run by one more thing. So then I went ahead and I shared the user profile again. To see what would happen, just the exact same motion, same process. And it did, it did, it did share the profile. Now, there's two shares. There's a shared profile and the shared pizza Roma, Roma pizza. But when I tap on the Roma pizza topic, my share, it it navigates over to the user profile.
Hmm, and it's the girl uh that we've been talking about in India, Avni A.
Yeah, I see that, I see.
There was also one other clue for whatever this means. The me- a message he typed out was visible in the main chat preview window.
That's right.
But not visible in the topic.
And you can't get to that topic, John, because it navigates over to the user profile.
That pizza place, have you interacted with that profile at all?
Never.
Never, okay.
I I'm gonna check, case of a mix up, let's see. Uh, Todd, are you, did you share this with like a user or a group?
I did, I shared it with um one of our staff, ground team, Aliana. I can send you the screen record and the time it happened to check set replay.
If it was a group, I was gonna ask if you could add me to the group, just so I know what.
Oh.
But.
No, it's not.
Um.
I can. I don't know if see if watching a session replay is helpful. I'm not sure if it's even available.
Yeah, so Roma's Pizzeria has the same profile key as Avni's user key. So let me see if I can find. And we'll do. I do not see, let's see. Uh, topic user key. It's wrong column. Okay, so there exist. It looks like two days ago, yeah, it looks like two days ago Todd or somebody created a topic sharing that topic user key. Um. Let's see, chat. That's it. Okay, and. This group. Okay, what are these groups here? Their group. Key in. Yeah, Todd, you were messaging, is this Aliana's user?
Correct.
See, I'm trying to verify what I've seen in the database, four, four, eight, oh, five. Yes, so. And then we'll see where. So the topic is, from what I can tell, the topic is absolutely the user that is being shared, at least from the database side. But Todd, are you still seeing it as the pizza place?
Um, yeah, actually, I really need to send you the screen record, so you have a better idea of what's happening. Um, but yes, that is correct. In fact, let me just get in there just to make sure I'm not. Been in there. I don't even know. Yeah, Aliana. Not in my lobby. One day ago. No, it's just. Oh, it's a couple, was that two days ago, John?
Yeah, this was two days ago.
Yeah.
There's a weird bug with iMessage right now. Um.
I can't find Aliana's.
If you have an iPhone, be careful, like it's pulling older chats up to the top.
My god.
Of the lobby. It just happened to Dale and just happened to me. That's the weirdest thing, yeah, like it's, it, it was nothing big, but like Dale responded to a chat from two years ago, from a group that we were in. And I just responded to a chat with Danny and his wife that hadn't had a message in. And I just responded to a chat with Danny and his wife that hadn't had a message in it for more than twenty-four hours and was somehow at the top of my lobby. That was responding to Danny, that was weird.
Hmm.
Yeah, I just had, that's, both those happened when the last.
That's dangerous too.
Yeah, so just keep a close eye on who you're responding to.
Mm-hmm.
Did you send a screen record yet, Todd?
Sorry, still trying to find Aliana's message, but I'll send the screen record right now. Okay, just lacking to you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I got distracted cuz it's weird bug, but um. Is Ismail, where did we leave off?
Um, I'm just kind of giving an update on, um. On the profile changes that eliminate the jumping and loading.
Yeah.
And then we switched over to talking about Todd's, um.
Yeah, and that one you think is a backend issue, potentially?
Um. Maybe, I don't know. It could be backend or it could be the front end fed the backend bad data.
They're looking.
I know there's something funny going on. That's either the front end gave backend bad data or the backend has a problem.
Oh, it's, okay, Todd has these two topics. Oh, let me see what he has in his chat with Aliana now, let's see, where. Okay, so topic wise. Oh, let's see, so. Seventy fifty-four. Uh-huh, see, both of the topics. Exist in the chat. And Todd, did you ever share Roma's Pizzeria like with Aliana trying to reproduce this?
No, I've only reshared Avni's profile. The first time I shared Avni's profile, it became Roma's Pizzeria. And then I sent, and then I tried to do it again, found Avni's profile, reshared the profile to Aliana again, and this time. He shares the profile, so now I can see both Roma's Pizzeria and Avni's profile as topics in our chat.
Okay, well, maybe I could see what happens in the session replay. And this was, uh. One AM, one thirty AM UTC on. The nineteen.
Do you want me to bomb my update as Jerry investigates?
Oh, yes, please. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just to, just all the time, but yeah, um, so, uh, just a quick update where now if you go to profile, you only see the two buttons and you'd see one here instead. Or, as a loading skeleton. Now, um, other than that, I worked on the tags, um, I sent your screen recording and if you saw it where. Basically, if you click a tag, now it's smoother, the animation, it basically hide, uh, basically, um.
I did some, yeah.
If you just look at the last screen recording, it's it's, it shows you that when you click it, it hides and then it navigates. And if you click back, it goes back to the chat.
Yep, I just wanna, okay, good.
Yeah, so, any feedback there? That looks good.
Looks good, um.
Okay, cool. Um, and of course, I, as I mentioned, I, hopefully the the quotas won't crash on you now. For better memory management, the track on iOS is fixed in chat, so we have, you gotta get to that today, um. The message input again for the compose that I added a fix, so hopefully that works, we need to set as well. Uh, now, the other one was lazy querying the spotlight, so when you go here to the spotlight, and then you, we're gonna say we're gonna search something. So if I just start typing, as you can see, as I'm typing, nothing is, nothing is happening after I let it go for five hundred milliseconds since the search. Um, so hopefully, and this search seems pretty instant, there's, there's two problems with this where if you go back and you come in. It used to show you, and like let's say I do now, like Sam, it used to show Ismail for a second, like last result, and then it'll update it, now it won't do that. And there's a five hundred millisecond delay for typing, so that it only calls API once after the user's done typing.
Okay, show me, show me one more time.
Yeah, like if, let's say, if, if, so first of all, I added a safety where if you just type one letter, nothing, like it doesn't search.
Okay.
Cuz it has to be two plus.
Good.
Um, and then if you do like, see, I'm typing right now, like it it only responds after, oh wait, what happened there? A second, I typed one letter.
Heart loader too, right?
Oh, yeah, that wasn't there, I guess I can add it. Well, well, no, because it's not really loading, it's it's just the API didn't even get called yet. Hmm, maybe five hundred milliseconds is too significant?
Yeah, happens is a long time.
Yeah, maybe that's why, um, well. Spotlight screen, um.
I would do.
What do we normally use, like, three hundred or two fifty?
I was thinking two hundred.
Okay, let's do half of that, so now, now we have the two fifty millisecond delay.
Yeah.
So now if we go, and if we do like. Oh, I guess it'll just take a second for the actual.
Yeah.
Results to come in, so maybe a heart loader would be nice.
There wa- there is a heart loader like in the production version right now.
There is, let me see.
It's, it's real, this is what's weird about it, and I still, I feel like there's still something we're missing because you'll see the heart loader briefly, then. The black screen for another full second, then the loaded results.
The loader looks like it only shows one time only.
Yeah, but it's not, what I'm saying is it's not doing the heart loader right up until the moment that the results appear.
Correct, I was probably waiting for it to. Just, it's waiting for the API call to, like, to kick in, uh, yeah.
But that's not.
Okay, okay, I think it's, I see the, I I see the problem in production, I see it here, I'll add that heart loader to where it feels more natural.
Yeah, it should show right up until the results.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if there's results, it should just keep the old results, cuz it looks like when I also started typing, it removes the old results, so I think it should keep them until it gets the new ones, maybe, is that a good idea or no?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, I'll make those two changes to make it experience a little better here. Um, but I did add the delay, just now moved it to two fifty, so that should, that should help. Um, other than that, I added some optimizations in discovery feed, so it should be a little smoother. Uh, now, a little quicker, um, and most importantly, I did the whole memory offloading, so that took it's really long.
Okay.
Your phone, well, this one is not a good example cuz I don't have a lot, but.
Yeah.
And I did the same here.
Wait a minute, wait, why is that? I, I forget, we talked about that a few days ago, even though this is QA, it should still have ample. Discover feed cards.
Oh, I'm just not following a lot of people, I guess.
I don't think you need to unless Jerry, is this only in production that it shows everything? Cuz in QA, the discovery is very short.
Yeah, it only shows, well, okay, so the discover feed, it pulls in only users that were active in QA for like the past week. And then it has another optimization that we're only pulling records for like the past month, I believe. Like, there's optimizations that are put onto the discover feed that because we don't have but maybe a single-digit number of users active in QA.
Right.
It's not showing all the, all the cards.
Could you, maybe just show, I would just show everything, cuz like, if there's problems, they'll, they'll come to the surface.
Uh, let's see. Yeah, I'll try to remember that, it's just that to keep my queries, you know, in sync.
Hmm, right.
I try to keep the code.
And keep them in sync with QM production?
Right.
Yeah, let's see, hmm. Well, and they are in sync right now, and that's the problem?
Yeah.
QA, okay.
Dude, I could all, I could just flip this switch and everything will show up.
Yeah, in QA only?
Yeah, but uh, whenever I do an update, it'll just get re-overwritten.
My cast immediately switch it every time he wants to push to production, which can get, which he can forget or can get annoying.
That's too risky. I don't wanna do that. Wh- why can't you just leave it? Always QA has everything, but.
It's SQL code is not like, uh. I- it's not like JavaScript code, like I cannot put environment variables in it.
Uh.
Only do conditional action, the query is just a query.
I see.
Yeah, there's no inline logic that I can do depending on the environment.
Hmm.
I mean, honestly, a good test would be here inside this cuz it uses the same logic as discovery.
Yeah, you can go back to the beginning of time on there.
Yeah, and this one I had, again, like, you can go back down quite a bit, and that's where I found some errors yesterday with the data, which I've been sending them.
Okay.
But, I also, um, I also optimized the screen, this one needed some optimizing, so same thing, I made it, less re-renders, memoized everything. Um, offload from memory when it gets very long.
Okay.
Um, so, we should have. Better performing overall with the phones, uh, let me see if it gets stuck, I don't want it out, cuz this day was getting stuck a little bit. Uh, but I think we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, I I know, I'll, I'll turn off it, anything gets stuck, but so far it looks like. It's going to. Yeah, looks like it just keeps going.
When it paginates, does it um, have to wait till you get to the very last record, or does it?
No, it's just cuz I'm going super, super fast.
Okay, so.
So if I go slow like this.
Hmm.
Like a regular user.
Okay, cool.
See, it just paginated, you don't even know it did.
Right.
It made it again, but if you go like super fast, it'll see the heart.
Got it.
Then, yeah. But yeah, no, it looks like all the problems are fixed. I think I was able to reach this, uh, I don't know, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
As you can see, the page ended quite a bit.
Yeah.
And, let me see the memory usage on this thing. It did grow, so I don't know how, how good flash list is on removing these, but we'll see. Cuz you can see when you start splacking out a little bit, that's because they removed it off of memory and it's refetching them.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be a different flash list soon anyway.
Yeah, so. Uh, yeah, but, um, yeah, those two both should be optimized, it, I I just passed a prop where it removes anything that's on its screen, it should offload it from memory, which. So it's just a flashless prop, I really don't have much control over what it does, but it should help, we'll see how that goes.
And you did some memoization?
I did memoization on both discovery and user feed.
Okay.
And cleaned up some extra renders and stuff like that, so it should be a little smoother.
Right.
Overall.
Okay.
Um, let me see what else did I work on, um. Yeah, yeah, so I think, I think that's, that's what I finished, um, I still have. Uh, a few things, which is, uh, these stuff to work on, the public proofs, the cache updates for that. Um, I still have to fix the Android models, which are dark and hard to read. And then there's that issue we just saw when I tried to share a profile, the avatar was wrong. Um. And yeah, other than that, I wanna push a build with what I have now. So that. You guys can start testing it and most importantly, start testing the, the music and chat, see if that's all behaving the way you'd expect it to.
Say that last part again?
I was saying I'm gonna push a build right now, so it would have everything I just mentioned, like the compose, shouldn't have the text, the optimizations, the. Tagging, you can go to profile and all, and the skeleton loaders, when you go to somebody's profile and your own, um. And most importantly, it has the. The tracks, the music inside chat, which I think I fixed everything for, so I I want it. People to test it, see how it's fast behaving the way you'd expect it to.
Okay, um. Before you push it though, what about, Amin did some. Small fixes recently, ha- have you gotten his PRs?
Um, I haven't reviewed any PRs yet, I do see some that are up. Um, so if, yeah, I can definitely, I will get those in before to build.
Yeah, there's some. I mean, some of them are on the new architecture, which we're not gonna be worried about in the near term, but the. If, if we're gonna do a a nice uh, production build update, which I think we're pretty close to. I can't remember, there was a couple things though that he did address. Actually, I could look at our conversation here and see.
Uh, is, is he here?
Oh, I know, it is, it was one big one that has been super annoying. No, he said he's having network issues.
Mm-hmm.
But you could slack him, but um, one super annoying one where the text jumps around. Um, I suspect it's inline text prediction from iOS, which I've. Figured out through, through the chat GPT that there's like a native fix and he did that fix and I tested.
I see that.
Yeah, I'd like to get that one in and see if it solves our problem.
Yeah, that PR, okay, I see right here, yeah, it's a small PR, yeah, no, it's good, um.
And then he also fixed session replay potentially, don't know if it fixed it yet. Is there a way I can look session replay for QA?
Is there what now?
Can I look at se- a session replay on QA? Maybe Jerry?
Um. I don't know.
Jerry, um. In build sixty-eight, which I'm on on my test phone.
Mm-hmm.
Changed some settings, so we wanna see if uh iOS is now showing session replay.
Okay, I see.
So John test phone in QA.
Okay, uh, I wanted to also say I found that the issue with what Todd, um. Reported, that, that profile we shared, Al- Aliana, the, um, I confirmed that the. Improper data is getting sent to the backend.
Why, how? From the front end then?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Let me.
Slack Ismail on that one?
Yeah, I know we were kind of.
Sorry, but what, what was that?
For the create DM mutation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the user key is being passed as profile key.
Oh, so was user name, okay, yeah, I thought it might be fine if it needed bad data.
I'll send you the, uh, the session replay link.
Okay, cool.
Okay, um, session. Okay, um, session replay is still black. On John test phone.
I see Amin set up PR to change the quality to. Medium.
Yeah, it's still black right now.
So all I see. PR wise, for session replays, that he changed the quality of the video, it's got it. And then there's another one where start location reporting only after onboarding. Um, the. Chat input one, changing a quality. And the other ones are related to the new architecture, which we're not interested in right now.
Yeah, so mainly the chat one. The jumping, hopefully, and you said the other one was regarding session replay, but.
Yeah, he changed the quality of the recording. And then there was one more that he stopped sharing location while onboarding only after.
That one, let's get that one into.
Yeah. Just a bunch of console logs that I see here, which, uh. Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll slack him.
Okay.
And I'll try to fix the bug with the sharing profile, I don't know how that, I mean, it's weird, how, how did that happen if. I mean, if it's, if it's working normally, how is it that only sometimes the front end is passing in that data? Which I'll figure out, we tried to figure out at least today.
Okay, I messaged Amin on a couple of these little things, the session replay didn't get fixed, um. And it had a different little bug, um. Okay, so. Uh, let's see. Uh, you'll get the text thing in. And that was it, right, I guess, because the session.
Session replay and the location reporting. And I need to fix Todd's problems a lot, I'll try to at least.
Yeah, okay, if, if you get that one and the other stuff, will you do a production build?
Production, well, production doesn't support mu- uh, the music, I think, yeah, does it, Jerry?
What about music?
Production, like the SoundCloud stuff in chat, does production support it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, then yeah, I'll have a production built up.
Okay, awesome, okay, thank you, Smell. Um, I guess we can't get Amin's update right now, but uh, let's go to Wells, Wells, let's get your update, please.
Yes, sir. So. Um, I'll catch up by yesterday, uh, because I gave the reminder to Jerry, but I came like one minute after John left. Because I, I went to break, back from break, uh, but yeah, John, so. I did finish the photo trusted upload, I was working on uh, before yesterday. So the, when you press on the add photo button in a profile. It will uh, allow you to upload up to three images, and once they're uploaded, the cache will be updated, so. They will be displayed in the trust tips, and I made it so. Um, even if the user is looking exactly at the part of the screen, when it updates, it, it will show nicely to the user. And that is open right now and for review, and there are. A couple of other PRs for review also, and since I ran out of tasks to do, I went on the. Uh, task we're currently discussing with Todd and Shanto for the. The map showing the items when. Uh, uh, showing in the map wherever user has.
Want to do, do that, make sure, talk to me first before you get into any feature, because we're, we're gonna start. I want to start looking more inward at the app that we already have, not keep going outward on it, so. There's, there's still plenty of little things, like for, for instance, I'm sending you a screenshot in Slack. And I think you and Chantel worked on this, this is the blue gradient that comes down for the share link. This is on my, this is on my iPhone. Test phone in QA, uh, it's an iPhone fourteen. But you can see there's like a hard line there, the gradient doesn't really come down. We, I thought we were gonna, we were eliminating that, um, rough edge, I'll send it to Chantel too, so she can see what I'm talking about. But I want, I want you guys to get this looking cleaner across all devices.
Hmm, that makes sense.
Yeah, so. Let's get that improved, I'm on build sixty-eight, so this, I don't know how up to date. This branch is. Maybe you, maybe this, maybe this has not merged your latest. And because I know you did a couple PRs, a couple tweets on it, right?
Yeah, and i- indeed it looks, um. Um, to the, the, the gradient looks to, to the top. It should be lower, perhaps it might be the, the device height being in between the. Permax I worked on and the FD, which is a smaller one.
Also, let's make sure that Amin has. Your latest branch merged in his branch, because he's working on a completely different React Native architecture, he might not even have. Your latest branch merged. So, because maybe you already fixed it, and he's going off of your older code.
Yeah, perhaps, I, I don't think so, this should be in development already, so if Amin is based in, in the development, he should see there.
Hmm, okay, okay. Then, then yeah, will you take, take a look at that and let's get, I want all devices, you know, to look where it's smooth, where they're.
Yep, sounds good, sure.
Yeah, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, for the, the PRs, they are not in, in development still, I mean, the features. Um, we have the, the profile add photo button, so for when you press on it, but you have not favorited the profile yet, so. The model pops in and says your most favorite first before adding a photo, and then the photo upload itself. And besides that, the screenshot detection for the analytics and the. Debug strategy that we implemented and we're using on the token and the token, so only those features are not in development. Everything else we discussed in previous uh, standups should be in development right now.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, um, so then. As far as m- moving forward tasks, um. Fi- let's finish this gradient thing, let's get that. Okay, and then, um, I have a feeling Chantel probably has a long list of just small, um. Uh, style improvements that she probably would like to see implemented, no, no, again, no major features, just, just any. Yeah, just like any, anywhere text is like getting cut off or, you know, wrong.
Yeah, I've seen like buttons that are not on there, right, and like wrong spaces and stuff, so yeah.
Yeah, will you work with Wells on that today, tomorrow, okay?
Yeah.
Cool, there's probably plenty, keeping busy there, um, I'm so like. Distracted with outside stuff that. Yeah, I'm, I'm not, normally, you know me, I'm like very.
Hands on.
Yeah, very, very religious about little style issues, but they're getting away from me, so. Yeah, if you could, if you could step in on it, that'd be good. Cool, I got, I've got a meeting coming up in an hour and a half too, at the office with somebody, um. Could be really good addition as far as, just like, um, really well connected. Had some exits already in the tech industry and. It's really like interesting person, though, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you more depending on how the meeting goes. But um, she, she wants a job with us, yeah, as far as like promoting. To uh, larger investors that she has in her network, because she's already had a couple exits, and um. She's out of the Bay Area, so we'll see how that goes. In the meantime, um. Wells worked with Chantel and um. We'll get, I want to, again, I want to keep looking inward at the app and making sure. Everything we have is, is clean, polished as possible, um, Chantel, another thing you could look at, which would be great, um. Jerry created a welcome message for new users in the Garibaldi Arts Club chat. This is something we can do now in any public chat. We tested it, it's working, so now I'd like to expand it, um. Maybe you could assist with some welcome messages like in the girl squad, um. Good Vibes Club, anywhere you're active, where you, you feel like, and um, it could benefit from. A descriptive text, and Jerry, could you send Chantel a copy of what we're talking about?
Yep, if you could tell me the content of the message, we can even have it addressed to the person. And who it will come from, so I'm sending that to you.
Yeah, that's a nice touch too, because it says like, hi Todd, welcome to the Garibaldi Arts Club chat, group chat.
Yeah.
Yep, so. Check out what I sent you, Chantel.
Yep.
Okay, good.
I got it.
Cool, okay, um.
Oh, that's so cool that it comes from him.
Yeah, yeah, it, these are little things, when I say looking inward at our app, these are little things, sometimes Jerry can do. Without even a build, and they ha- they provide tremendous value for very little effort, and I really want to dig in. All over, any kind of little hints and welcome messages, little, just little things that go a long way. And I want to continue watching more session replays as much as I can to you, that always reveals stuff. Which reminds me, Jerry, was there any questions since Ismail wasn't here yesterday? I, I know we pretty much exhausted that whole conversation about the contact upload. The timeouts, do, do we have, do we have any lingering questions around the timeout?
Um, no, because we, we determined that was for the, um, the location pinging. So we determined that was for a location pinging, and then Amin was gonna disable location pinging in the onboarding stack. And. The only other thing is, um. You asked about a partial, what happens about a partial completed request, and I said that. Well, the GraphQL server cannot begin to validate the request until the entire request has been received. Um, I think Amin and I got as deep into it as we can, and we have some changes to make. Amin is not here, but um, I know I said yesterday he was gonna demo it if he had it done. But um, we can, maybe when he has time, maybe tomorrow to demo it.
Okay, and it'd be nice to keep running it in the background if possible.
What do you mean, keep running it in the background?
After forty-five seconds?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, okay. Well, let's, we'll get an update from him.
Yeah.
So we're all together, um.
Hey, John, real quick, um, so. I know we're talking about going inwards and not really new features, and I'm not really sure if this lands. In a new feature or not, but one of the things Todd and I were talking about this morning is, um. I've had some feedback from se- several users who would like to see those hints that come up throughout the app. In a settings menu that they can refer back to. So I'm wondering if we could do something as simple as, um, you know, screen recording for the areas where it like. Doesn't have the background or something, uh, to the Lottie animation, I don't know if that's how we'd want to do it, but since we already have those hints. I don't know if that would still be considered a new feature or not, but.
Yeah, what do you mean, when it doesn't have a background, what do you mean?
Oh, like, um, for example, when it highlights, uh, the heart. Um, you know, there, it, that animation doesn't have a background profile. Or in the lobby, when it shows the chat topics, there, it doesn't have a background of the actual message. Uh, it's the overlay. So that's why I'm saying maybe it's just a screen recording of it, um, so that you can see. A background of where it's at, for an example, but then also still has the hints.
Yeah, yeah, there is a get help section too, we have that is very basic and almost.
Yeah, we, we need to build that out, I know I need to enable the intercom chat, but are we all. Set up on intercom to get those messages?
Yeah.
That, that's a, that's actually another thing that I, I had mentioned about, um, things we wanted to. Improve on, like, the, the requesting to delete their account.
Yeah.
I feel like that should all be from within the app, rather than that form, because what we can do is we can. Log them out of the app after they submit the request to delete their account.
Think you need a form.
No.
You know, how would you go about with the request?
Well, you'd be an authenticated user, and then you would just. Do the clear my account, like.
Yeah, there's, I know there's some like rules around it. Um, it's web-based right now, right?
Right.
I go to the get help, is that something Iod or Jeff Morrow could work with Chantel on, without time, because I don't want to tie you up on it.
But no, the type, to log them out of the app, this would have to be.
Not, not so much that, uh, just anything else in there, like if Chantel wanted to put some hints into that get help view.
Yeah, um, ideally, what would be really nice is that just linked to a Notion portal.
Okay. And I'm not sure what that is, but sounds good.
Chantel could make a, a Notion site, and then we could have that link to the Notion site. And that's all, I see a lot of very, it's very basic FAQs.
Right, okay. Um, and then you could get more fancy if you want in there, she could do some screen recordings if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Isn't that what Notion basically is, is uploading like screen recordings, and then it fills out what you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you use Notion before?
I've only seen ads for it.
Yeah, the only other thing similar to Notion is, I think Confluence is more for like an internal source.
Yeah.
But uh, yeah, Notion is what I've seen a lot of big startups do.
Okay, um. Could Chantel work with Iod or, or Jeff Morrow?
Chantel could probably work with Chantel on it, it's like a very. Driven interface.
Well, I mean, it.
So it would just be like hooking up to our app, though.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah, it's just that, once Chantel gets the, the portal set up, then she could send the link to them and they can, uh. And they can get that in there.
Okay, yeah, so I'd say that would be good, and then having that delete account thing being so. Dominant and having it be the only thing in get help is such a bad idea, like it shouldn't be. It should just be a little more.
Delete account.
Well, yeah, and it should be more subtle, it shouldn't be like the only thing you see. You know, like, there should be a lot of options, and um, and not just be like. It's almost like it's, we want them to delete it, it's weird, so. Little bit of design improvement there, go a long way, so yeah, why, why don't you work on that too?
Yeah, it looks like we already have a Notion account that I just joined.
Okay, great. Okay, very good, all right, um, so yeah, then, uh. If you can work on some of that with um, Notion and then with Wells on some of the. Maybe some of the, start with some of the worst um, style issues, go from. Pretty down. Okay, great, alrighty then, um, guess that'll do, anybody need anything, any questions? Okay, going once, all right, well then, um. I'll, uh, I'll stay here for a minute with Todd, Danny already dropped off, but, um. All right, I'll, I'll stay here with Todd, and then anybody else needs anything, just let us know.
Sounds good.
Great.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.